Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. A Lord of newness and growth, who has provided us with this garden in which to live. We thank you for the blessing of flowers. We thank you for new birth and for the hopefulness of the coming spring. We thank you for the possibilities of growing in our understanding, our respect, and our care for one another. May we be good stewards of all that has been entrusted to us. In our deliberation tonight, may we seek wisdom and be wise in our decisions. Decisions for the good of all who have placed their trust in our leadership. May we listen not only to our conscience but to the voices of others. May we judge less and lift up more. Guard us from blind self-interest and grant us the humility to seek your will in all that we say and all that we do. This we pray in the name of the One that in calling each of us to grow and to bloom makes all things new. Amen.
Amen.
And now we need to approve the minutes for our special meeting on February 22nd, 2023, our regular meeting on February 14th, and our closed session on February 14th.
Mayor, just one question. On the February 14th meeting, under new business, the first item had to do with the building reuse grant for Regulator Marine. There was no motion taken on that. Do we?
Is there a good reason for it?
We take care of it tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we make a motion on the minutes now or after that? After the change? Gotcha.
So move. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion on that? And you're right, Councilman Miller, but we're going to take care of that.
Gotcha.
All those, hey, Aaron. All those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I hate to do this at this time, but I told you to our manager, this is where we got to do it. We're going to go to closed session and consult with our town attorney regarding NCGS 100-2.1. And I'll have to ask the public if you would step outside at this time.
We need a motion.
You too, Bob.
A motion in a second.
Motion during the closed session?
Okay. Motion will have a second.
Second.
Motion will have a second and any further discussion. All those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Who's that guy?
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. And this time we'll go into our committee reports. And the first one is the Administration Committee, and that's chaired by Councilman Ha.
Thank you, Mayor Stallings. We only have one agenda item tonight to discuss. You each will recall at our committee meetings in February, as it relates to the Confederate Monument, we had reached an informal consensus on a potential location, and that location was Hollow Park across from Tasty Freeze. We did not take a formal vote at that committee meeting and thought it would be best to push that to our regular meeting here in March for a formal vote. I'm not aware that that consensus that was voiced at the committee meetings in February has changed any. It's my understanding it's still the consensus of the council that the Hollow Park would be a good location. And with that in mind, I'd entertain a motion from anyone to that effect.
Being that I'm on your committee, I'll make a motion that we relocate the statue to Hollow Park.
I second that motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And Mayor, that concludes the Administrative Committee reports. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, the next committee is the Finance Committee, and that's chaired by Councilman Dixon.
So we have four quick things on the Finance Committee. One is a resolution for the approval of the sale of our used water and sewer pumps. We talked about that at length at our committee meeting, so I would put that in the form of a motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
The second thing we have on is we are financing our air pack and radio packs for the fire department with Southern Bank. We've gotten favorable rate with them, and we went through that completely in our committee meetings, so I'll put that in the form of a motion also.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One thing to add, just to point of clarity, there was, the council did determine a seven-year term, so the resolution will be updated to include the seven-year term as well as the interest rates associated with that and any other corrections that we need to make.
And that's what you recommended at our committee meeting.
And it was 10 of each, 10 radios and 10 air packs.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Third thing is a budget amendment to deal with those proceeds once they come in from Southern Bank, so I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And the fourth thing is a glorious thing. We are doing a budget amendment for the final phase of our street resurfacing that we went through, all the ones that we're going to try to cover this cycle. And I think a lot of people waited a long time, so this is a really good thing for the town of Edington, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, so Cory, you said that that would be updated once, pretty much once it gets the project going as far as cost. Is that right?
Okay.
And also, Mayor, Cory, also, I think we've got a consensus to making a commitment of resurfacing to be a regular part of our discussions, kind of a rolling, phase one, phase two, up to however how many phases, and just keep on talking about it and make sure we stay ahead of it.
That's correct.
Cory, since we have an audience, could you go over the streets again, or am I asking too much?
I've got the...
I've got a list here that was in the paper that would help you.
Okay, I've got last meeting memo. Just one second.
We're definitely talking about the two streets in Mill Village, Elliott and Phillips.
So the original nine streets that we are tasking, David will get quoted for paving, is Watered, East Freemason from the railroad track to North Oakham, Wood from Church to East Queen, Elliott, West Church from the Dead End to Mosley, Walker, Albania, Phillips, and Valentine. That was the original nine streets that were selected for us to...
And the only one getting curbing guttering is Walker. Is that correct?
Yes, other than the section along East Freemason, there is curbing gutter there just at the entrance of Oakham, and there is also minor curbing at the entrance of West Church near Providence, just at the apron. Walker is the third and final street, and, excuse me, Albania. The curbing gutter is Albania Street as well.
Is DOT still on schedule to pave Broad Street in the spring?
Yes, sir. The last conversations we've had with them for Broad Street, that project did let mid-March for the contractor to proceed. The only thing that I do want to share is the contract term for that is an 18-month cycle, so it can happen anytime within that 18 months. The project has been awarded, the contractor. We're going to try to continue to nudge DOT to really push that forward.
Are they staying on top of things right now, DOT? Are they moving ahead?
Yes, and I don't think that's any type of indication of their management. I think that's just an abundance of the ARPA funds that have been available and the limited number of contractors that have been out there to actually do the volume of work that we're seeing really kind of make a plug through. So I don't, I think that's more of just a, there's more work than there is time.
Gotcha.
Cory, is Grahamville Street on their schedule? Can you give us a forecast on Grahamville Street?
No, I have had some discussions with them about that and let them know that there is some sewer repairs that we would like to make prior to any resurfacing on Grahamville. So at this point, it is not on the radar. We would like to look at our budgeting for making some very needed repairs through that area before any surfacing happens.
So looking in the near future, maybe a year from now, we could spend more time looking at Grahamville, especially after Broad's done? Because Grahamville is bad.
Yeah, a year or less. I think we will quickly respond to the sewer repairs with some preliminary utility patching. But as far as the complete re-surface, that could bump up against that year plus.
Gotcha.
So next year, we're going to look at the streets that don't have sidewalks and curbing to see can we start working on them, getting them in a package?
Yes, sir. So when I spoke with the Public Works Director about that, we really wanted to really clean up the initial two phases of the round of paving and get those remedied and out of the way. But part of that is, is part of his assessment was to start identifying all the streets with them without sidewalks.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. The next on our list is the Utilities Commission, and that's chaired by Councilman Bond.
We talked about this in our committee meeting the other week. Cory and Mike had come up with a plan that we need to charge more money for installations. It was for 200 amp, it was $500. For 400 amp, it was $600. And that roughly represented one-fourth of the cost of the installation. We said they had given us a budget that they wanted to charge $1950 for 200 amp and $2100 for 400 amp. That's materials and labor. We talked about it in the meeting, and I put that in form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Next is our Public Works Committee, and that's chaired by Councilman Miller.
Mayor, we just have one item, the land acquisition at the Westover Lift Station. Mayor, it's discussed at our February 27th committee meeting. The town wishes to acquire an additional 7,500 square feet of land at the Westover Lift Station site at an appraised value of $30,000. This purchase will allow the Public Works Department to perform needed repairs and resolve setback concerns. Also, the acquisition would permit the town to correct easement and right-of-way issues with neighboring property owners. Funds are available for this purchase from a transfer, from the water sewage salary line to handle this. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve this purchase of plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say it looks good over there, Cory. It looks like it's been all renovated. Beautiful fence up there, the road is looking good, looks like a new generator on the lift station. It looks good.
Would really have been nice if we could have got this done two years ago.
Yeah.
Saves a lot of inconvenience and hard feelings and...
Yeah. What was the purpose of the needed space again? Additional space?
So we have multiple setback issues with the actual structure itself.
Gotcha.
As well as multiple undocumented easements, or multiple utilities that are on the property that are undocumented easements, that is just a nightmare for cleanup that needs to be addressed.
Gotcha.
Any further discussion?
This looks good.
Okay, all those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
That's it, Mayor, for...
That takes care of our committee meetings. Next is a budget amendment for the Department of Commerce and Building Reuse Grant, and this is what you referred to earlier.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Just one thing here. We were so excited about the announcement of the $200,000 building reuse grant for Regulator and the 25 jobs that were associated with that. We steamed right on through and went directly after discussion into a vote, but as a formality for their official records and ours, we do need a motion and a second to approve the amendment and have those documented within our minutes, so this is simply...
I move we approve the amendment.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. And I'll take full responsibility for that. That was my error. Okay, the next is a budget amendment for trash truck and transmission replacement for Public Works. Cory?
Thank you, Mayor. From your memo that was sent out last week, on the week of the 27th, the Public Works Director was advised by our fleet service mechanic that the motor and transmission for the trash collection truck had went out. The truck was immediately taken out of service. It was actually hauled in and determined that both the engine and the transmission had failed. They were initially pulled from the vehicle. We've received quotes, we're in the $20-plus-thousand range basically for replacement parts for these. This amendment will allow us to purchase the replacement motor and transmission and any of the necessary parts that may come with that. One thing to note, this is the 2014, it's the newer old truck that we had, and just to provide some insight here, the backup model that we are using currently is a 1997 model that is very much on its last leg, so...
I think so.
We do recommend increasing the interest earned on investments as a revenue to cover this cost. We're currently at $100,508 versus the original projection of $71,508, or so, excuse me, we're $71,508 over budget for this revenue projection. This increase would allow us to purchase that. And one thing also to add that we would like to share as a part of this amendment, because of the age of the current spare, Virginia and I are requesting that we actually solicit RFPs for financing for a new truck, and that would establish this one as the primary backup with two new trash trucks, one that's about two years old, and then a new truck be our fleet, and we would actually decommission the old 1997, 26-year-old truck that we're using now that may get to the same point depending on how long it takes to...
Are you suggesting we put both of those in one motion?
The only motion that's required is the budget amendment for the replacement parts for the existing 2014, but we did want to at least pre-brief everyone that our intentions are to solicit pricing for a new truck, so the one that we're replacing the engine and transmission for would then become the spare in the future.
Will we have those proposals for budget season?
Yes, yes. And we're so close, we wanted to at least go ahead and get that done because there's no way that we would receive one of those trucks before our July 1 budget is approved. So it would be part of the 23, 24 fiscal year. But we just wanted to at least share that with y'all. You know, this is quite a substantial investment into an eight-year-old truck that would be a great spare once this motor and transmission is replaced. But we do intend to solicit bids for a new truck to be used daily versus the one we're getting ready to...
And so somewhere down the road, you'll use those spares?
Yes, yes.
All right, this time I'll entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. The next is a budget amendment as well for Hollow Park Monument relocation. I'll call on you for that, or Cory?
Probably a combination of me and Cory. I understand that Cory's proposing that we have a budget amendment. I did want to bring up that when we began the discussions on the monument issue, that a private citizen stood up publicly before this body and stated that she would pay for the cost of moving that. And I took her at her word, and I think y'all did too, and I certainly think we need to contact her and tell her that we remember that she made that offer and that we kindly accept that offer, and would like to think that we would get those funds as promised. But I just felt like that needed to be said before we voted on a budget amendment. And that's all I needed to say.
And so the budget amendment as presented will increase the maintenance repair in parks, playground line item by $40,000. Again, these funds are part of the additional $71,508 over the initial revenue budget projections for our interest on investments. This should cover any costs for relocation and park improvements associated with that.
I'll make a motion and go ahead and move forward with it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Quite honestly, I'm surprised that we got a price that low. I thought, I really thought it would be much higher than that.
And Cory, will you follow up with that citizen, please?
Okay, the next is an audit response letter from our Finance Director. And Virginia, you want to take that?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry to pass it back, but this is the first call that they're really making findings, but like Mr. Hanks suggested, they obviously had a few concerns. The first being the unbalance of appropriations that were made throughout the year. They wanted clarification about what those projects were for. Several of them included preservation of different properties as well as street drainage and painting issues we had. Additionally, we purchased some fleet vehicles for the police department and the administrative use. The second one was that the audit was submitted late. We will continue to work diligently with the auditors to ensure that all deadlines are met and that they're submitted and required. I did not want to throw Mr. Hanks under the bus, but I was a little surprised that he did not mention the fact that one of the reasons the audit was late was that their accounting system was hijacked, so they were shut out for about three weeks. So that was really the primary reason, but that's just between me and you. And the third was about the budget that had been postponed. And so that we will this year look at not being as, take a more conservative approach to what we actually project that we'll receive as revenue. We still gave it up collecting 98%, but it wasn't what our budget was for.
Thank you, Virginia. We appreciate the job that you do, and the fact that you didn't get any exceptions means a lot and says a lot for you, so...
Mayor, I just want to say that was an excellent audit. I've never seen a small, one-page audit like you've got. Four major areas, three of them you didn't have to report on, and the other one, I think he was, let's call it like it is, trying to find some things. Good, good job.
We will continue to be diligent and work as a team to make sure that we continue this process.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I guess that's the letter that you passed around that we signed.
Yes, sir. I will refer the council to sign that, so you can return to the LDC stating that we discussed the performance indicators that they had been part of the...
Okay, and with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. Any discussion?
Just keep up the great work.
All those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. And the next is the North Carolina Resilient Coastal Communities Program. And Cory, that's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some background, there's no action required for this. This is simply an update. Dwayne has been working really hard on looking at grant opportunities, whether that's for planning in many facets. And so the town of Edington was selected to participate in the 23/24 round of the Phase One and Phase Two of the North Carolina Resilient Coastal Communities Program. Phase One includes community engagement and risk and vulnerability assessment. Phase Two also includes the planning, project selection, and prioritization. The NCRCCP aims to facilitate a community-driven process for setting coastal resilient goals, assessing the existing and need for local capacity, and identifying and prioritizing projects to enhance the community's resilience to coastal hazards. The town of Edington will walk through the framework leading to the development of shovel-ready projects for technical assistance to complete Phase One and Phase Two. The Division of Coastal Management has proposed to match the town with the WSP USA. And so why is this important to share? This is a no-cost option for the town to focus on with the RCCP folks around protecting our shorelines. And one thing this does do is it will create a venue for us when we talk about Phase Three for the actual funding for some of these projects. So by us being selected to complete Phase One and Phase Two, it does allow us to find the funding sources that are needed to actually complete some of these shovel-ready projects. So this is a great success for Dwayne to find this and for the town to become an applicant of both initial phases, which will basically guarantee that funding source going forward. So good job, Dwayne. I wish he was here to talk more about that.
Dwayne does a great job on...
He does.
Well, the community, I would ask that they look at working closely with the mayor's task force on litter prevention, recycling, and the environment, so that we're not duplicating efforts and that they can take advantage of that committee, which is a very, I think, effective, aggressive group of people.
Okay, I can do that.
And we don't need to take action, though. That's not something we need to take action. Okay, that concludes our agenda for tonight, and the next is items considered timely and important. Yes, sir?
Just one quick item, Mayor. Regarding the Hidden Hotel, it's my understanding that Cory, you met with the Saga Group about two or three weeks ago? And I understand they've entered into a contractual agreement with Edington Construction Company, and Edington Construction Company will be coming in to perform electrical repairs, perimeter cleaning, security fencing, doing some painting. And Saga themselves say they would be putting in some window blinds in the building. And do you have any idea when this project would start?
I do not. So one of the things that Saga also committed to was providing the general public with some silk screenings on the front and the rear to show some of the most recent ideas of what they envisioned that structure to look like. They've also asked that at that point, they would like to have some type of public meeting they're almost likely to have to try to answer any questions. And some of the last conversations that we've had is this would be their final attempt to go after any of the new market tax credits, and they basically had asked for 120 or 150 days, basically getting us to midsummer before they would either choose to go after the project or to less than sell the property.
Would the public be notified or the public media?
Yes.
Okay. Location, time, whatever. Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to ask you, was there any news on the shopping center out here in North Edmonton?
No, sir. I have not heard anything back. I have not heard anything back from the bank or the engineering firm that was contracted with them to get some cost estimates together on the rehab. But I will follow up. I had planned to do that sometime this week, so...
Okay.
And Cory, do we have an update on the hiring of the Public Information Officer that we've advertised for?
We do. Some calls have been made as of today to try to schedule some interview times for at least initial phone calls this week. So yes, we have started the interview process. That closed on Friday.
Following up on what Roger just said, what about the electrical director position? Are you still looking?
At this point, the listing is still up and still available. We are still soliciting applications for that. At this time, we have received very few.
When is Mike's last day?
Mike's last day was March...
Oh, he's already gone?
Yeah, yeah. So he stayed in the area for another week. We did have final lunch last week with him, but most of his time has been built around actually relocating multiple states away. So he was still here, but not here.
I got you, okay. Cory, have we made any movement on, or towards a parking study? Parking study?
I have received some initial information that we had requested from DOT. I'd like to share those during the committee section. At this point, we have not moved any further. We wanted to start with the current assets that we had. When we talk about some of the paving improvements that we had discussed, the town has very much accelerated some of our current town parking locations to try to make some pretty substantial improvements for those. Those orders have been given for the electric, as well as Public Works, to start, you know, getting the work done and getting the quotes in to start that. But as far as the official parking study, no, sir, not at this point. We wanted to fix what we had.
So it's not ripe, for example, to place it on the committee meetings for late March?
No, sir.
Cory, what is the deal going on with the parking lot beside the furniture store? They've continued to have that closed. Is there a reason for that, or...
So that space was initially not part of any lease, when the current owners were leasing that space. When the property was listed for sale, the current tenants actually purchased the property, which includes the parking area there beside them, as well as a small grassy lot at the rear of the property closer to Court Street in the town parking. As of right now, there has been, you know, no interest from the town to purchase or investigate purchasing that property, and it's really in private ownership. I've heard some leasing conversations come about, but at this time, most things are unreasonable for us to consider.
Right.
Okay. Just curious.
Question for you, do we get the lights up at Griffith Park?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Anything further up here? Yes, sir?
I would like to express appreciation to the council for its willingness to wrestle with the issue of the relocation of the Confederate monument. We've affirmed tonight what the Human Relations Commission asked us to affirm when they made their report, and we've chosen to relocate the monument. I think that's a step forward in terms of creating a more just and equitable community, and I am very proud to be a part of this town council and share that decision with them.
Anything further up here? If there's nothing further up here, we'll open the agenda for public comment. The first, we have only three signed up, and the first one is Jason Kent, Virginia, and Edenton.
Yes, sir. Mayor Stallings, Edenton Town Council, I address you today to make a recommendation regarding follow-through on your 2022 decision to move the Confederate statue from the center of downtown. First, my concerns from the beginning have been making sure that the community affected by these statues had a voice and advocacy with their representatives. Personally, I see this statue as problematic anywhere on town property, due to its original purpose being grounded in intimidation and white supremacy. However, I recognize, I recognize that my voice isn't the only one that matters here, and I want to express my gratitude to the town council for providing advanced public notice this time, and I appreciate that you were considering at least moving comments to the front. I wished you would have. Second, having observed the community activism over the last several years, I'm sure I'm not alone in my increasing concerns for the rising tension related to the statue, including incidents that occurred earlier in March. Although protests have remained peaceful, I worry the misunderstanding between the sides could quickly escalate. Respectfully, I'd like to recommend to you that you still separate the project into two distinct phases, by first, moving the statue into secure storage, and second, if you must, erecting the statue in the new location with proper context and in compliance with state law. By immediately voting to move forward with this approach, I believe it will result in a positive outcome for all parties, as it will do five things. One, immediately cease the protesting and public campaign to move the statue. Yes. Two, ensure the safety of town residents considering the rising tensions. Yes. Three, allow you to complete the first phase by June 30th in this fiscal year, delivering on your unanimous resolution of February 2022. Four, avoid any irreparable harm to the statue. This was requested by the Sons of Confederate Veterans, actually, in their March 2 emergency request for temporary restraining order. Although it's questionable whether they even have legal standing in their lawsuit, if you put the statue into storage, it will certainly be safer than it is now. And fifth, and most importantly, please focus your attention here, it will provide a cooling-off period for everyone involved while it's in storage, up to 90 days according to state law. Put simply any conditions you've agreed to with the Sons of Confederate Veterans, or your attorneys, and others who oppose moving the statue, whether it be park beautification, a spotlight on the statue, moving the mammoth pedestal with the statue, or God forbid, a rededication by town leaders, you can put a dagger into the souls and hopes of the community most affected by this statue and these statues. The context in which the statue goes back up, the contextualization of the signage that goes with it, and forming the true facts and history cannot and should not be rushed. I actually find it despicable that the woman who offered to use her life savings to take the statue down, that she's being misrepresented, that she might actually want to put the statue back up. That's not what her point was, as far as I heard it. So I call on you today, professionally put the statue into secure storage, take your 90 days, as the law allows you to do, and while the plans are finalized for Hollow Park.
30 seconds.
Do this right. Do this right, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, the next is, Cory, help me out here. Lori Dablo. Lori Dablo.
Oh, boy, here she goes. Good evening. Forgive me for being just a tiny bit skeptical about Saga setting a public forum and setting an actual date for that anytime soon. So in lieu of a date having been set already for a public forum on the status of the Hinton Hotel Restoration Project, my husband, Patrick, and I are opening our business at 116 East King Street, right across the street from the Hotel Hinton, on Saturday, March 25th, at 5:00 PM to host a community meeting. The general public, members of the town council, Mayor Stallings, and our town manager and staff are invited to talk one-on-one with concerned residents about a timely plan to end the stalemate that has gone on for far too long. Representatives from Preservation North Carolina have been invited to share with the people who have been most negatively impacted how that organization is dealing with violations of the protective covenants and restrictions that are provided for in a 2014 North Carolina General Warranty Diet prepared by Dixon &amp; Thompson Law, and agreed to by Saga Construction. An invitation was emailed to Bob Housewar?
Howar.
Thank you. Director of Building for Saga Construction, and it's our hope that a representative from Saga will be present at the meeting to experience not only the passion that we have for the preservation of historic buildings in Edenton, but to present an action plan in regard to the rehabilitation of the Hotel Hinton. Area press is being notified of the grassroots movement that is growing day by day, with the common purpose of ending an almost decade-long stalemate characterized both by inability and, in some cases, unwillingness on the part of the responsible parties to find a timely solution. A petition to that effect will be available for signatures at the March 25th community meeting. We hope all that who are committed to working cooperatively on this unacceptable situation will make it a priority to attend that meeting. Thank you very much.
What was the time for the meeting?
About 12:00.
Okay, the third and final one. Susan Ingalls. Susan, your signature looks worse than mine. That's not...
No. I, too, want to thank you for trying to wrestle with the statue, and for deciding to remove it from its current location. But I have to tell you that I'm among the citizens who doesn't feel quite heard about the point of removing it. I think now you have an opportunity to prove an abhorrence of white supremacy by using your time and energy to ensure more equity in our community than it has ever seen since about 1700. There is, there has been a striation growing that we need to address. We need to take care of everybody in this town, and removing a symbol from this particular location could be one part of that, but it would require telling the forel story of that symbol wherever it lands, and really walking the talk of the removal. So that's what I've looked for from y'all next. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, and that concludes our public comments, so that completes our agenda. So that being said, meeting adjourned.